Integration meeting to order. And in so doing, move to go into executive session under Article VII, Section 105F of the Public Offices Law to discuss matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In executive session and.
And you're better now.
Would anybody else who heads for the door get hurt?
Yeah, that's a problem.
You got five members, four of them is four, right? I got five, four of them is four, right?
Okay.
I'll take a pay cut.
Can we, are we back in regular session?
We are. We're back.
Then, of course, our executive session was adjourned, we're back in public session, and we're ready for action item two A. And that's the approval of the minutes of the March 6, 2023 meeting. I'll move approval of item two A. May I have a second?
Second.
Assuming there's no discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Item two A is approved. Action item B is the policy calendar. Two B one is a resolution to authorize a contract with Precision Task Group Incorporated to provide human capital management and finance management component software solutions and integration services. University has, as you know, initiated a large-scale modernization effort to replace the human capital management and finance components of CUNY First with cloud-based software and service enterprise resource planning to succeed HCM and finance components of CUNY First. On June 8, 2022, the university issued an RFP to procure same. Three vendors submitted responsive proposals which were evaluated by a committee to, which was evaluated by a committee. The university, this is a very complicated resolution, but PTG, Precision Task Group, will provide CUNY with Workday application, including human capital management and finance management software as a service. PTG will provide Deloitte consultants with Workday implementation skills and will enter, CUNY will enter into a five-year contract with PTG, including a right to renew for an additional five years at its sole discretion. University seeking approval from the Board of Trustees. This is an important paragraph. To authorize a contract with PTG, the combined total authorization for expenditures under this resolution will not exceed over a 10-year period $123,957,720 of capital and operating funds. I'm going to ask our Vice Chancellor for IT and University CIO, Seb Formosa, to make a brief presentation of this item.
Thank you. So I am going to actually go through this relatively quickly, and I am going to do this with a few of my partners from the organization. But let me just jump right in. What are we getting? What are some of the key benefits that we're getting with the implementation of this new system? As you would expect, we're going to get better data security through the, a very robust implementation of a cloud-based application where our vendor is going to provide us a better security through the investments they're making in their own cloud. We're getting better workflows. What does that mean? It means that as work moves from one desk to the other, we're going to improve the ability to develop workflows to move works for both HR and finance across multiple desks, which gives us also not only an integration point, but better efficiency, right? We're generating a much more efficient way of getting work done. Data analytics goes without saying, one repository so that we can do data mining, and we're getting sustainability by being able to accommodate growth. Why accommodate growth? We're putting the risk of growth on the vendor by having the vendor provide us scalable cloud services that can scale up or down depending on what we need. What are we buying? And here's where I'm going to ask my partners from HR and finance management. But what you see in this chart are the key components. Think of these as the modules, the individual modules, and these modules comprise the overall systems, and they map to the organizations for both human capital management and financial management. So I'm going to just ask Dorian Gloria to give us a few words on the HSM perspective.
Okay, hopefully you can hear me. I think it's working now. So it's really the full employee lifecycle will be covered by all of these modules. Employee administration is where their entire history will live. Employee self-service, which we don't have very much of right now, so it will really expand it. I think time and attendance and leave management, I want to point out because right now, as you probably know, we don't have one system across the university. Some campuses have, some campuses have a manual system, and there's no consistency. So this would be a really great improvement for us, and certainly it would help us do things like reporting across the university, which we are very limited in our ability to do right now. Payroll administration, of course, will still remain with our payroll partners, but benefits administration and processing will be completely new. We don't have a module that handles benefits at all, so it's very hard for us to manage our employees or help them when they are looking for information regarding their benefits because we have to go through so many hoops to get the basic information. So very excited about that particular piece of it. Recruiting, we have a very basic and somewhat aged system for recruiting, so very much looking forward to seeing the new modern bells and whistles on that one. And then onboarding is something that we do not have in place right now. Again, each campus may have their own process, but we don't have anything consistent. So in general, we do feel like it will really help us with central reporting, it will replace shadow systems, and it'll give us the consistency that we are missing right now.
And Christina Chiappa will talk a bit about the financial management modules.
Thanks, Seb. So on the finance side, currently, we have several of these modules within PeopleSoft, but we're really looking forward to really enhance what we have and streamline what we have. So for instance, right now, we have the general ledger, accounts payable, accounts receivable and billing, and treasury and asset management. The two modules that are really going to make the biggest difference for our office and also the finance offices around the university is really the budgeting and planning, which is really the operating budget. And right now, everything is very manual, it's on Excel spreadsheets. And this is the area in finance where most colleges build their own shadow systems so they can manage their budget. And the integration between the budget model and HR is going to be just really significant for us because obviously there's about 90% of our costs really are in budgets. So really, the budget projections, things like position budgeting, all those things that we do manually right now, that's going to make such a big difference. And the other module that really is going to make a huge difference for us is also on the budgeting side, but the capital budgeting. We actually don't have really any of that in the system. It's all manual summarized data. So those two modules are really going to be the big wins in us and really make a difference in the finance area. Seb?
Thank you. So we spent a lot of time, in the next couple of slides, I will take you through what we've put together for governance. And governance is absolutely critical. Clearly, this is a business transformation project, more so than it is an IT project, and governance is vital to be able to achieve success. So we developed a structure that will facilitate timely and effective escalation of issues designed to keep all of the critical parties engaged so that at the appropriate point in time, we can deal with any issues regarding scope, design, budget, and those kinds of things. So the governance model that we built, as you can see in this slide, is based on having a project manager that is going to be working side by side with the steering committee, reporting into the COO. That project manager is going to have access and contacts with the campuses so that we can ensure that the campuses, who are vital to our success, are aligned with where the project is going. Two things that I would point out in this chart, of course, in the bottom, you can see the subject matter experts, that's, you would expect that, but organizational change management. We are working to ensure that we have an appropriate partner to deal with the organizational change management requirements that we will encounter as we bring the shadow systems and the shadow processes into a standardized CUNY process. And obviously, we want to bring in a quality control partner to help us ensure quality across the project, help the project office manage quality from that perspective. We expect that the vendor is going to have a fairly, a non-trivial amount of people that are going to be mapping to these specific functions. But we want to have, make sure that the PMO is our own staff to what I would call partner up with the vendor to get the system implemented. Next, I'm going to take you through just a couple of timelines here. You can see that on the top, we're negotiating our contract, and we expect to be able to complete that effort by the end of June. It's an estimated date. But concurrently, the lines below are work that we're currently doing. We are working to staff up a project manager, a very critical senior role that is going to be reporting directly to the COO. We're working to identify ways to procure and select both a QA partner and an OCM partner. So those are activities that have not been completed and that we are actively working Next chart gives you a contract summary. This is a summary of the resolution in a certain extent, right? I'm not going to cover off on the first couple of bullets, but it's important to understand that PTG was the chosen partner, and they have partnered with two partners. Workday, who is going to be providing the system that we are going to implement at CUNY, and Deloitte, that is going to be providing the skilled consultants that is going to configure that system to do what we needed to do. And we're working right now, we're currently working right now to finalize that contract. And in the last bullet, you can see it's a five-year contract with a rate at our sole discretion to renew for five years. And you've seen this chart before. This just gives you a sense of where we are now. We're negotiating final contract, identifying, trying to identify partners for the QA space, for the OCM space, so that we can target an implementation kickoff and start early in quarter three of this year. That is all I have for you today. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions to say? Matt?
One is, is there, is there ever a role in this process for the technology, the committee of, the subcommittee of this committee? I mean, you created like a computer, an IT committee, and I don't understand its job. I mean, I'm on the committee, I'm ready to dig whatever holes need to be dug, but we never get called to.
Matt, this is a procurement, we're talking about procurement.
Yeah.
Talking about the technology.
Well, all right, I beg to differ, that you can separate that. I know we're buying something, but we're buying something. Anyway, it's a comment, whatever it is, I just don't understand what the other group is doing. The other issue.
Besides chair that other group.
Okay.
I'll tell you.
Okay.
You already know the answer, but I'll remind you. When we have something to discuss with respect to a review of the technology, we're there. We're not there yet.
Okay, all right. What I looked for in this presentation and didn't see was some place in this for the department chairs at the campuses because they are probably the largest appointers of people and managers of all kinds of things, and they are absolutely bananas about the situation that they're in now. And they, it would be great to, I guess maybe over in that little space where there was the thing for the campus liaisons and you had the different, can we put somebody, some entity that deals with the department chairs? And if you don't get what I'm saying, just pick a department chair and ask them how their job is and how all of the HR and payroll and finance systems are working for them. And they will jump out of the nearest window. And so if we could please involve them in this, it would really, really, really make a big difference in terms of the information you get about how this is going to work at the level where people are actually hiring people, especially when we open the new section in the class that's needed and we have to hire the adjunct to fill the slot. And all, you know what breaks loose because we have to break this rule or we can't do that rule or, you know, anyway, we've got to make this work for the department chairs or if it's not working for the department chairs, this isn't working for CUNY.
So, Matt, you had us a hello. Yes, we will do it.
Good. Great.
Okay. And I think they're back from the window when they see the functionality in the system in terms of facilitating their jobs.
Yeah.
Mr. Henning.
Looking at the system.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee.
Oh, all right.
Mr. Henning, go ahead.
He was nice, he raised his hands.
Go ahead, please.
Looking at the system and how we currently have the PeopleSoft system integrating with CUNY Buy, we see that it's very difficult to get vendors onto CUNY Buy in order to get them paid. So if we want to have any honorarium recipients, if we need to process them, first, we need to go through our business office, get it submitted to CUNY Buy, and move it forward to the CUNY Central, get it forwarded to, in order to get them a registration form after they've submitted their tax identification forms. And after they submit their tax identification forms, we have to submit all the documentation through CUNY Buy without any proper notifications through the PeopleSoft system for it. So how is that going to fix this in terms of getting people onto CUNY Buy? Getting the proper notifications through the system and afterwards getting the payment request processed without having any of the overhead of having to do the process two or three times over in order to get a payment processed?
Executive Vice Chancellor Batista.
Yeah, these are two separate systems. So the system that we're presenting to you today is to deal with HR and finance. CUNY Buy is a procurement system, right? We are now in the last, going into the last phase of CUNY Buy, which is to implement the finance part. We were not going to do that until we finish, we close the books on our financial year. So, not to make Christina's life impossible, we need to close the books, we will then implement the financing. And a lot of these things are going to get resolved, right? That's why we've tripled down the amount of training. A lot of it is connected to training. We need people to really take some of those training classes so that they properly understand some of the questions that you're raising or we have, there's answers to those questions, but it's not completed yet. Two different systems.
Thank you. Trustee Berger.
You've given us a timeline up till today. What is the targeted implementation date for these two modules that we're discussing?
So we expect to go, right now, the tentative implementation that we have is we expect to go live sometime in the middle of 2025.
So one of the things we learned from the experience of CUNY First, and I read a lot of memos from my predecessors, was that the system, legacy system, the way we rolled it out, we didn't build in enough time for a system like ours to fully, we also left some modules out because we ran out of money. But putting that aside, we wanted to build in enough time to make sure that a system our size, I mean, this is a huge undertaking. And what's coming next after that is, now that we have our provosts, is to have a student-facing part of this, right? That's the next thing that will come to the board at some point. So wanted to make sure we build enough time to fully implement this whole system, which is going to be a bear to move forward.
And are we sure, based on where the state and city budgets are, that we won't run out of money partway through this and be unable to fully implement it?
So one of the good news about this is that we've gotten some really feedback connected to, most of this is going to be covered through capital. So we feel very confident that on the capital side. The chancellor early on allocated, not this last budget, the previous budget, allocated resources. We then went back to the chancellor and asked for additional funding. So I think from a capital perspective, we're covered. So I think we're in good shape. It was really great to hear from the bonding partners that we could, this is fully capital-eligible, most of it. So very, very happy about that because as you know, it's a lot, we have a lot more flexibility on the capital side than the operating.
Anyone else? Then I have a question. Suppose at the end, you know, when 2025 rolls around, there's a newly named trustee, and they ask to see the budget, and they are directed to the website. I presume the budget will be accessible through the website. Is that a correct assumption?
You mean at the finance module?
Whatever module you want to call it, is it going to be on a website, accessible somehow? Will a trustee, will a member of the university community be able to access, to view the budget? Not to manipulate it, to view it?
May I try? So there is the budget, and then there is the individual pieces of the budget. Each individual piece is going to be viewed by those who have a need to know. So if a trustee is given a profile with the appropriate access, yes, they will be able to see the entire budget.
Let me pose the question differently. Most public agencies that I'm aware of, even the one, the much vilified MTA, has a way to get on the website and view the budget. Are we designing a system that will allow us to do the same thing, to view it?
Yes.
Yes.
That was my question.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Are we ready to then move approval of item two B one? I move it. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item two B one is approved. Thank you. Item two B two is a resolution to authorize contracts with four executive search and recruitment firms, Academic Search, Isaacson Miller, RPA, and Whitkeith, to provide executive search services to the university. University seeking approval to authorize contracts with the previously named vendors in the combined amount not to exceed $6 million over a period of five years. And Senior Vice Chancellor for Institutional Affairs and Special Counsel Glenda Grace is available to provide further background on this. Glenda?
Good evening. Just so you know, this was work, went through procurement. As you know, we have four contracts, proposed contracts to be signed. The procurement went to, the RFP was sent to 11 companies. It was also advertised. Six offers were received, five individuals were invited for oral presentations. After the presentations, after the proposals were received and presentations were given, four, these four individuals were selected. I'm assuming they may well have questions.
Any questions or comments on this? Trustee Berger.
When there's a particular search, how is one of these four selected to do that particular search?
They're given a mini bid, basically. So the executive, for example, if there was a search in the central office, the executive search office would send what was, what the search was about, the parameters of the search, to the four companies, and then they would submit a mini bid, and based upon that bid, they would be chosen by the executive search office. And the same, a similar process would be followed at colleges.
Yeah, this is so important. I just finished a search, and we had one of these companies as our consultant, and they were just terrific. And it would have been very, very difficult without the kind of support we got from that consultant.
That's a good thing. I've had a few that haven't been so availing, but I presume that we're keeping an eye on these folks. So for example, one of the outcomes is that we don't churn through candidates, you know? They go through one search, then they magically end up on a whole bunch of other searches, and we're looking almost simultaneously at the same candidates.
I've got to say, I've had mixed results, some terrific. Sometimes I feel that the search firms are going through the motions. They do the same thing with every search, and I think we need to be wary of that. You know, we're not their only client, and some of it feels mechanical.
Like that.
Do we do evaluations? Do we ask our search committees to do evaluations of the consultant when a search is complete to let you know who we thought was good or not so good?
We've done that, we did that at some point, but that would be regularized, so we can make sure we can.
That would be a good thing.
Absolutely.
That's a good thing. Thank you.
That would be a good thing. Is there anyone else? Okay, are we ready for?
Jonathan?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Henning.
Could these standards for search committees be applied to ECP-level positions on the campuses that aren't presidents, such as vice presidents, provosts, et cetera, or is that specifically reserved for presidents?
No, it's actually in the resolution. It says it's open for senior executives on campuses also.
And wherever a search is involved.
All right.
Anyone else? Okay, then I'll move approval of item two B two. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item two B two is approved.
Uh-oh. What is it? One broke.
All right.
We lose more chancellors that way.
I think you need a new chair.
Do we need to send out a new procurement for chairs?
I'm still okay.
I need a new chair.
I would, I would.
Don't hurt yourself.
You better go and get him to travel.
That happened at another meeting just last week. Yeah? It happened at Abbott.
Okay.
I think so. Go ahead.
Wait for the chancellor to be seated.
My Caribbean legacy.
Okay. Item B three is a resolution to authorize an extension of the contract with EAB Global for the Navigate Enterprise Student Success Software System. This is the other component of IT upgrades that we were, that we were engaging in over the past four years. Universities implemented EAB's Navigate Enterprise Student Success Software System across 13 senior colleges to strengthen connections between student advisors, faculty and staff in a collaborative network that provides, that improves student outcomes. Universities also worked with EAB over the past four years to build customized Navigate systems tailored to the individual needs of the senior colleges. Our five-year contract with EAB and the Navigate system and related consulting services at 13 campuses is due to expire on November 5 of this year. University seeking approval from the board to authorize a three-year extension with a two-year, with two one-year optional renewals to be exercised at the sole discretion of the university for the period of November 6, 2023 through November 5, 2028, for a total Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Wendy Hensel is. Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Wendy Hensel is available to provide further background on this. Provost, do you wish to do that?
Just the one thing you didn't mention, this is a shift, is that this is also a shift to all the community colleges. In the past, they've been on Starfish, which was a component or a different product, but from the same, same folks. And this is, they are both ending Starfish, but also the usability of it is, is not as good as Navigate. So this is actually a great step forward for the university.
So I presume with students and faculty representation around the table, there is a degree of satisfaction with this service thus far? Okay.
I have a question.
Please.
I see the one part of the expansion is more funding towards the platform, if I'm not mistaken. Where is that funding going to come from?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
I see that the extension of the contract with EAB, all that, the explanation at the end. I see that the annual cost will remain flat rising to a certain amount compared to the other part. I'm just wondering where the funding comes from.
Well, the funding comes from the Office of Academic Affairs.
Okay.
In conjunction with the campuses. But this is mission critical. So this is the type of technology that's woven into the intersection of everything that we do. So it's very, very necessary.
Okay.
Thank you for your question, trustee. Is there anyone else? Are we ready to act on item 2B3? I'll move it. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstentions. Item 2B3 is approved. 2B4 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Metro Elevator to provide elevator maintenance services to Brooklyn College. I presume you have read the information on this, but the university is seeking approval from the board to authorize a five-year contract with Metro Elevator in an amount not to exceed $7.7 million to provide elevator maintenance services to Brooklyn College. Brooklyn College Vice President Finance Administration is available to provide any further information should you require it. Would you like to add something, Mr. Gilbert?
Yes, good evening. I'm Alan Gilbert. I'm the Senior Vice President for Finance and Administration at Brooklyn College. You know, as we started the process for the elevator maintenance contract, we worked very closely with the Supplier Diversity Office, and the recommendation was to go with a set aside SDVOB procurement. We did so. We sent this out to the six vendors recommended by that office. Three of the vendors did not respond despite repeated outreach to them to respond. Two of the vendors, you know, were unable to, you know, participate and meet the requirements in terms of the work that needed to be done. Because this was a public procurement, other, we sent out 73 IFBs overall. Three other vendors that were not SDVOBs did respond. And the pricing of the SDVOB is within the 15% threshold required. So we're comfortable that going with this vendor is in the best interest of the university and the college.
And it bears mentioning that there was not one bidder, but a number of them. So we're okay on that. Is there, is there any other question that anyone wishes to ask on this? Hearing none, I'll move approval of item 2B4. May I have a second? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstaining. This item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Policy item B5 is a resolution authorized extension of an existing management agreement with Capstone On Campus Management for management services at the Queens College Student Housing Facility, known as the Queens Housing Summit Student Housing Building, and its authorized extension of an existing management agreement with Capstone On Campus Management for its participation in the project at the City College Student Housing Facility referred to as the Towers at CCNY. We issued a RFP for manager or managers of two student housing facilities that are located in the current management agreements with Capstone On Campus Management. The management agreements are both currently set to expire June 30 of this year. In order to complete and assess the results of the RFP, the university seeks to extend both the existing management agreements for up to one year. These extensions will provide the university with an opportunity to consider services provided by and fees payable to future manager or managers of the summit and the towers in order to optimize residential hall experience for the university and its students. Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel Derek Davis is available to provide any further background on this item. Derek, do you wish to add anything to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be clear, we have two bonded dormitories at the university. I apologize to the chair and the committee. I wish we could have brought this sooner. However, the number of decisions go into whether or not you want to continue with a management company. And each, while they're both the same parent company, they're two different entities. And so we have to give each campus the opportunity to determine on their own whether or not they want to proceed with their contract. As you all know, I do not have the authority simply to extend a contract. And RFPs do take time. So we thought it was in the best interest of the university, in the interest of time and for protocol purposes, to extend the contract, to have a valid RFP for both campuses. Give them the opportunity to review whether or not it's proven to extend and have the management companies remain in place. I will say by caveat, with Towers, when we did the original bond deal, Capstone was part of the original indenture and contract. We did not procure Capstone. But since we did the refinancing during COVID in order to avoid costs that we were losing from beds, we became a party to that management agreement. And as a result, DASNE felt it was appropriate that we do a procurement, notwithstanding the fact that our partner in the Towers project, which is EHS, Educational Housing Services, has the right to approve of our vendor, notwithstanding our obligation to do a public procurement. So we appreciate your patience with us on this. We hope to have a procurement done sometime later this summer. And hopefully, within the next year, both colleges will have a campus management company for their dormitories. Thank you, Chair.
Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. Then I'll move approval of item 2B5. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstaining. Item 2B5 is approved. Thank you. Item 2B6 is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of this committee and is generated from employee data entered into the university's system of record between February 7 and March 24 of this year. The report contains a total of 30 ECP actions, including 14 interim appointments, eight regular appointments, seven employee actions, and one separation. Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria is available to add further context or give you further information on this, should you require it. Vice Chancellor? Anything to add?
Dorian?
No, it does not.
Are there any questions on this? Good. Then I'll move approval of item 2B6. May I have a second?
Second.
There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstaining. Item 2B6 is approved. Item 2B7, item 2B8, item 2B9, and item 2B10, 2B11 are ECP actions. Is there any objection to my linking them together? Unless there is a need to discuss any individual one of these.
I would just like further information on number 11.
Sure.
We've got information, I think, on the others.
Item 11 is.
Mr. Latanzio.
Sure. Thank you, Trustee Berger. Trustee Berger asked about the candidate for the Deputy General Counsel. First, I'd like to thank the board, the chair, and the chancellor for the patience over the last three years for us to find a Deputy General Counsel to the Office of Legal Affairs. We had two searches. The first one failed when I arrived here. The second one lasted longer than anyone had hoped. But through a lengthy process, I think we found a very ideal competitive candidate. And one of the hallmarks of knowing you're doing it right, or at least you're getting the, you hope the right candidate is when the candidate's firm or agency or institution fights very hard to keep that person. And the MTA fought very hard to keep Mr. Latanzio. So I really felt good about winning. We lose a lot to the MTA. So stealing someone who's quite competent and capable and who hopefully is looking to the future of this university, given his experience. He has both in-house, private sector, firm experience, which I think is very valuable, having served at two very prestigious firms, Schulte Roth and Arnold and Porter. He also has public experience, having served at the city council level and at the MTA. So he has a broad experience, both in perspective from the public and private sector, and just a terrific work ethic. So I am going to be relieved when he joins us on May 8. And that will enable our auditor, Associate Vice Chancellor for Audit, to go back to audit, and we can continue to build for the future. So thank you for the question.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else? Yes, Mr. Hannity.
Regarding item number eight, the appointment of Scott Gerba to CCNY as the Chief Operating Officer, is there any specific reason why we're paying this individual at the top of the range for the position? Even though they were working at the Fed, it's not necessarily correlating to work as a chief operating officer?
Would President Vince Boudreaux like to respond to that?
We've never, on our campus, had anyone with the skill set that Scott Gerba has. He, we don't have a unified budget. We don't have predictive planning on our, on our campus. When we interviewed Scott, he said his, the way he described it, he said, "My backbone is finance, but I extend financial analysis to every choice we're going to make on campus." He has done facilities, he has done IT. He actually was the person that led the implementation strategy when the Fed, across all of its branches, adopted Workday. So he even has experience in this area. I will say, in his first, in his interim appointment, he's already found $200,000 in overpayments in our HR office. So he has the skill to unify departments, HR, finance, facilities, adult and continuing education, that we've never had before. So, and we negotiated hard with him to get him closer to a CUNY salary range. He's taken a significant pay cut. I know others around this table have taken a significant pay cut to come and work here. But he had skills that we've never had and we badly, badly need, especially in this financial climate.
Thank you.
Well, if you keep saving us $200,000 in a clip, we're going to throw him a parade.
We'll make that part of his annual evaluation.
Is there, is there anyone else? So I, I'm proposing to link.
Yes.
These, these items. I will, as a motion, second, to link them?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, they are linked. Now voting up or down? Motion to approve on all of these linked personnel actions? I'll make the motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstaining. The linked items are approved. Thank you.
All right.
We're closing in. Almost there. Item 2B12 is a resolution to authorize a waiver of application fees for New York City public school students. You have all heard about this, seen it. Chancellor has talked to us about it before. It is a very good thing to do with respect, especially to some of the challenges we have had to closing those gaps in linkage between our public school system and our public university system. It's a $65 fee that's, that will be automatically waived between March 1st and April 30. Are there any questions on this? Yes, Mr. Hannity.
So I have two questions about this. First of all, I noticed that all of these dates are in the past, and we're voting on this now. So how are we applying something retroactive with a vote?
With, that bothers me too, except for the fact that we don't control the calendar for imposition of these fees and when they apply. It just happens that way. We're catching up with reality. I don't think it's a bad thing.
The board has the prerogative to ratify.
We also had a discussion at this at the last board meeting, including, including the extension to April 30. We knew it was coming, there just wasn't enough time.
The full board was consulted. We didn't have time. If we waited to now, we would have waited, used all the time that the students needed to take advantage of the waiver.
And the other question I have is, is there any plan in the future to re-implement this policy for future years? Or to extend this policy to students who want to apply either to graduate study or from a community college to a senior college?
We'll, we'll see how this works, and then we'll come back to the board and inform and decide what's the best course of action moving forward. Exactly. The prudent thing to do is to measure the efficacy of this, of this measure. It seems like a good thing to do. Let's see how it works. Let's measure its success.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll move approval. Second? Trustee Sunshine? No other commentary? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstaining. This, this policy item is approved. There are no more items on the policy calendar. Item 2A is the third quarter financial report. Catherine Abada, our budget director, will make a very quick matter of opinion.
Just tell me when I'm cut off.
I don't cut people.
So we issued the third quarter financial report last week. We'll, we'll go over the, the current projected condition for year-end. We can just touch on a few data elements for enrollment, tuition revenue, expenses, and staffing. So as of Q3, we're projected to end with a balance of $122 million. That's an increase of $10 million from where we were at mid-year. The structural deficits have come down from mid-year. They've come down by about $46 million. And that is mainly related to an increase in tuition revenue for where, from where we were projected at mid-year. The spring enrollment numbers were in a better condition than what colleges were projecting at mid-year. We've also seen a decrease in projected personal service costs. I think some of the hires that colleges were planning on doing are not going to happen this year. And so those costs have come down. At mid-year, also, we were projecting deficits for four of our schools. Two of those deficits have been eliminated. Again, it's through better, a better tuition revenue condition and also lower PS costs. So now there's only a projected deficit at two of our colleges. And at one of those colleges, the projected deficit came down from $7 million to $3 million.
Any other questions? Well, I have one. This is not a, an action item. However, in the past, as we have reviewed these quarterly financial reports, they have served a useful diagnostic purpose. Among other things, tells us where there may be problems. problems around the corner at a college. Failure to heed those warnings generally results in problems, as we've seen down in the past. We know two colleges are flirting with deficits, they're okay now. What do we do, now that we know it, what are we doing about it?
So all of the colleges, because really we're worried about all of our colleges, right? If we look at the summary page of the report, I can look to that if it's helpful. This page here, I'll call your attention to the adjusted balance column. So you can see that we are still projecting significant structural deficits at many of our colleges. The colleges have all been asked to develop savings plans, and the elements of the savings plans are revenue increases through either enrollment or collections, or other revenue streams outside of the regular tax levy operating budget. An example would be space rentals of facilities. That slowed down a lot during the pandemic. You know, we know that colleges are looking at bringing back that activity. The other component of the savings plans is expenditure reductions. So our colleges are all, have all submitted plans. Most of them are a combination of revenue enhancements and expenditure reductions. Expenditure reductions in full-time staff, so through attrition, consolidation of positions, the reductions in part-time staffing costs, and then for some of our colleges, they are looking to save on one-time, non-personal service costs.
And review of those measures is currently underway?
Correct.
So we're not, you know, because that cliff of red ink is coming.
Yes.
You can't say we weren't warned, can't say we didn't see it. So will we be in a position to review some of the measures that are being taken broadly?
Yes.
Trustee Berger?
Will there be any stimulus funds available for the next fiscal year?
Yeah, yes. So the colleges, some of the colleges will be able to carry over some of their stimulus funds into fiscal '24 to help with their financial situations.
Because, Mr. Chair, when I look at this, if you take out the stimulus funds, with one exception, every one of our colleges is approaching a cliff. And some of them are higher cliffs than others, but they're approaching cliffs. And, you know, I think it's good to say, yes, we've only got two that are in deficit this year, but that's, you know, that's false hope, once you take out that one column that says stimulus funds.
I mean, and that's precisely why we ask the colleges to do their plans, right, to be able to, and to be taking some of the measures. I mean, the, kudos to interim President Lynch at CSI. I mean, he's done a really, I mean, that cut and bringing revenue. We have spent time in the last meetings of the Council of Presidents talking about sharing collection strategies and a number of things that each campus is doing, so that everybody has best practice as they look at options that they might have on their campus. We hope also that the enrollment picture improves with CUNY reconnect. You know, we have several thousand students that, we have evidence that were enrolled and de-enrolled because of the vaccine mandate, right? So we're assuming that we're going to capture some of those students back too. So I think the combination of tight fiscal controls, the work that, you know, his Hector Christina and Kathy are doing with each of the campuses, while painful, and we've been criticized for that, is the right step, and we've been looking at, you know, Christina can document that, we would be doing this, we've been chipping at that deficit over time. And so, yeah, we're equally concerned too, but we're taking, I think, as many corrective measures as we can at the time.
The fourth quarter reports and the proposed budget will be interesting when we get there.
You bet.
Yep.
Well, it'll be interesting when the state passes its budget. That will tell us a lot.
We'll see.
Yep.
Is there anyone else? Yes?
How significant was the alternative sources of revenue when it came to the rentals and facilities? And like, what was the average growth, like, in terms of revenue year-over-year prior to the pandemic? And can we expect similar numbers now that mandates are being lifted?
Yeah, I mean, I think you're, I was going to make that point just before you asked the question, yeah. I mean, I think as we lifted the vaccine mandate, I think that's going to allow some of our campuses to do a lot of rentals across the university. We also are making, the presidents are coming to us for investments in their facilities. For example, CSI is investing in lights so they could rent out the fields and the different things to bring additional revenue. So, you know, we can't cut our way out of this place. We're going to have to, you know, really try to do some revenue generating, but all those things we're sort of tracking. And we think that campuses have a plan in order to use the facilities more effectively.
Having seen, I think, having some experience with the broad outlines of an approach, are you confident that we will be able to meet these challenges in the coming fiscal year?
Depending on what happens with our funding partners, right, and what we, how we end up on the budget, it's, there's a lot of sort of variables there, but I think that we are, as we review the financial plans, I mean, I think that the campuses have made some right strategies in terms of properly creating, looking at a lot of different factors, including adjuncts and all those different things that are, that are connected to their budgets. And I think that, we think they put some things in place that hasn't gone in the right direction right now. I mean, the impact, I think the chancellor used College of Staten Island, I mean, you went from $7 million to, they cut like $4 million, and then they made some really great, you know, smart cuts across that campus, and I think that we're starting to see that across the university. We're very mindful of those areas where it can be through using cultural balances and things like that to deal with it, you have to do other things in order to sort of properly balance. But we feel confident, you know, right now, but water comes.
Anything else? Okay, the final item is item 2, information item 2B, the Fiscal Matters Information Report. Christina Chappa, our interim CFO, will take us through it briefly.
Yep, there's just two items here. This report is really to talk about material fees or waivers. There's, City College has a couple new classes they're asking for material fees for. You can see the detail in the materials. And Bronx is asking for waivers of applications fee for about 80 students who are in this Future Now program, and that's worth $5,200.
Is there anything else? Mr. Hennessy?
Does the university have any input on the increase in tuition for out-of-state students?
What?
Increase in tuition for out-of-state students.
We'll be voting on that when we vote on the budget on the next meeting. That's an entire proposal that will come to the board and that will be among the things there, right?
Yep.
That's the board that will decide that issue.
Yep.
Anyone else? We're at the end, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So we move it?
Time for breakfast.
Trustee Berger moves it, is it seconded? All in favor? Thank you very kindly, we are adjourned.